Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to the Norwood zoning Board of Appeals meeting for January 5th, 2021. I'd like to welcome everybody to the new year, and let's really hope we have a great new year. And in many aspects, nothing like last year. But hopefully us, the country, and everybody's moving forward, so let's hope for the best for everyone personally and professionally. With that being said, I do have all the necessary documents I have for the next case, I believe. So the 645 case, which again, I apologize for being tardy on. It's case number 15-06, lot 9, Maxwell Ave is looking for a modification. Now, just for clarification, there's two Maxwell Aves, one is lot 9, one is lot 10, but they're actually two different cases, so we have to do them separately. Here we have a special guest on there, so I definitely want to welcome that individual. And congratulate, yes, grandfather, we don't want anybody to make that mistake. We have a young grandfather on the screen, so congratulations.
You gotta do what you gotta do sometimes.
I know, I'm laughing at you, not with you. Jack Perry is present, I believe, correct, Jack?
I am here.
All right, phenomenal, good to talk with you, buddy. All right, so lot, let's work on lot 9 first, which is case number 15-06, modification. The individual, Invest LLC, is looking for a modification from a recent, I'm sorry, from a previous case. I know he is represented by attorney Dave Hearn, so Dave, I'm gonna turn it over to you if you want to give an explanation. And frankly, you can give an explanation on, I'm not sure you can actually. So why don't you just keep it to lot 9 for now, and then we'll give an abbreviated version for the next case.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Happy New Year to everybody. I represent Invest LLC, which owns lots 9 and 10 at Maxwell Ave. And with respect to lot 9, back in 2015, I believe the hearing and decision were in April of 2015. This matter came before you for variance relief with respect to lot width. The plan that was filed with you, and I have given you with my letter requesting this minor modification, I have also given you what I have marked as the original plan and the Phase 2 plan. The original plan is the ZBA plan that was part of the record in the case 15-06. And you granted relief with respect to lot width for lot 9. In all other respects, it conformed to the zoning requirements. This is in the general residence district, but relief was needed with respect to lot width through the dwelling. That relief was granted in April of 2015, and then subsequently, they had to go to the planning board to get the lots approved, and there was some tweaking of the plan when the matter was before the planning board, and that is shown on the Phase 2 plan that I've given you. That changed, the area of the cul-de-sac was increased a little bit. The area of lot 9 was decreased by about 21 square feet. And that is the change with respect to lot 9. It did not affect in any way the lot width in the area where the house was to be built, and in fact, has been built. But it was done to, just as I said, some tweaking, because that's what the planning board wanted to see with respect to the size of the cul-de-sac. Almost the same thing when we get to lot number 10, but let's, as you've said, Mr. Chairman, we'll concentrate on lot 9. What I am asking the board to do here is to accept the Phase 2 plan as a supplemental plan, either with the original plan or in place of the original plan. And here's my concern, and the reason I raise this. You approved a variance, authorized a variance in 2015 based upon the plan that was in front of you. The lots, as ultimately approved by the planning board, and as the lots were conveyed, are slightly different from what you approved. Not in any respect, I would argue, that would affect the validity of what you did. But I wouldn't want to have a situation where down the road, somebody says, well, in 2015, they gave them a variance for these lots shown on the original plan, and now you're telling us that this is, these lots are slightly different. That's why I want the board to accept the Phase 2 plan, which is the plan that was approved by the planning board, and have that become the plan of record with respect to these lots. It doesn't affect anything really other than the area of the two lots, and slightly affects the layout out by the cul-de-sac, because cul-de-sac was changed slightly, but not in any significant way. And so that's the request with respect to lot 9. I'll have a similar request with respect to lot 10, too. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, Dave, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't see a litany of people on this assuming that nobody's in objection to this, if they're even aware of it. But I think it's a pretty relative, simple request and simple action. I will turn it over to the board for any questions. I'll stick with, how about I go with Mr. Riley first?
No questions.
Mr. Murphy?
No questions.
Mr. Mulvahill?
A quick question, maybe a stupid question here, David, but I've learned over the years, no question is a bad question. Are these, are there houses built on these already?
There is a house on lot 9, and they're hoping to put, planning to put a house on lot 10. There's already a house on lot 9.
So isn't, and again, excuse the question, is there a time limit on that variance?
Well, the variance was exercised within the time limit originally, in a couple of ways. One, there was a subdivision plan approved by the planning board and recorded later in 2015. Then the lots were conveyed, and lot 9 was built out, and is a separate lot with a separate house. This is similar to the situation up on Rosemary Street, when the OJ subdivision was done a number of years ago, and then in the last couple of years, the two remaining lots that had not been built upon were conveyed out. And town council gave an opinion to the building inspector that confirmed that the variances had been sufficiently exercised to make them effective going forward with respect to the property. In this case, and one of the factors there, too, was a subdivision plan that was approved by the planning board, and was, and then there were conveyances made of the land. Exactly what we have here, subdivision plan, a little conveyance, and also construction on one lot. So I don't see this as an issue on that, but I understand the question, one that I did wrestle with along the way.
Dave, I'm gonna interrupt you for... Excuse me?
I lost you there, I'm sorry.
No, I'm still, I'm still, hold on one second, please, I apologize. If you're not involved in this hearing, or you're not in line to speak at the moment, please mute yourselves so we don't have disruptions with phone calls or anything else, please. I would greatly appreciate it, thank you very much in advance. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mulvahill, I don't think there's an issue with the variance, variances having lapsed or anything like that, but thank you for the question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not questioning whether they've lapsed, but I'm just trying to be consistent here on... We all know Mr. McDonough was down on Rock Street, which that decision was referenced in the EC application on Nickel Street. And it was the Peter King property. Peter King applied for the variance to subdivide the piece of property to make it a single-family lot. It was conveyed to Mr. McDonough. Mr. McDonough did not build on the property for, it didn't start within the two years, but he was made to come into the board for an extension. So I guess I'll go to our seasoned member, Mr. Riley, or David, could you please chime in and give me an explanation on if you're saying that Soft Circle or Maxwell Avenue was conveyed? Couldn't we make the case, and again, I'm just trying to educate myself moving forward here, couldn't we make the case that on the case with the McDonough, King/McDonough/New Owner property, that once a conveyance is made, that the variance has been, they've performed on the variance?
The case law on this, Mr. Mulvahill and members of the board, let me, I'm gonna refer to a, something I wrote to town council on this a few years ago, dealing with the Rosemary, Chickering, Rosemary Street, Chickering Road properties, the OJ estate. The definitive subdivision plan was approved in the, after the, about six months after the board, this board had granted variances. By, once you do that subdivision plan and you record it, you have created the lots that have been approved with respect to variances by the board, and then ultimately with respect to subdivision by the, by the planning board. And that subdivision was based upon the relief granted by the zoning board. The problem some people have with variances that go stale is when they do nothing at all. They get a variance, and then they don't do anything with it, and then the variances will expire, as can special permits. But in this case, the, you know, the obtaining approval of a subdivision plan, recording the subdivision plan, and proceeding to build the house, all of those things amount to action that exercises the variance. And, you know, I'm asking you now to accept the Phase 2 plan. If Mr. Walsh has a concern when we go for a building permit, certainly we'll have, I think, a similar discussion to the discussion I had with town council when we did the Rosemary Street project, but I don't think, it has to be an issue. The, so, but again, I want you to be satisfied, I hope, with my answer.
I get it, I get it, I get it, maybe not germane to this particular application, but I was just trying to, yeah, equate the two, but that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, thank you, David.
Okay, appreciate it, appreciate it, thank you very much. Mr. Perry, do you have anything, any questions or anything, sir? Jack, just make sure you're not still muted, please.
No, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Yeah. No, I believe the project would have been approved as it's presented now, years ago. Like I said, I have to agree with David, I think it's a very minor issue. Nothing has really changed, and I have no mums about it at all. Let's approve it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, I'm actually in agreement with that statement, almost verbatim. I think it's minor, I think it's, I think it's valid. So I will entertain a motion to approve the modification.
A motion to close?
I'll second it.
All right, motion to close first, apologize. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. So there's a motion to close the hearing, all those in favor, Mr. Riley? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulvahill?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's myself included, so it's a five to nothing to close, and I'll entertain the pleasure of the board now, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murphy, all right, the motion to approve case number 15-06 regarding lot 9 on Maxwell Avenue. Mr. Riley, your vote, please?
Phil, you're still muted, Phil.
I'm muted, Phil, but I can read your lips, so go with the yes.
All right.
That's okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Mulvahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that's five to nothing, thank you for that case regarding David. Next case, I'm gonna roll right into, it's very similar. Again, we had to do it for technical reasons in regards to two different cases. So the next case up is case number 15-07, lot number 10 on Maxwell Ave, looking for a modification as well. Dave, unfortunately, I do have to ask you to virtually reiterate what you just said in regards to the last case, but for technical reasons and for the official record, if you could do that, you can make, you can do a brief summary.
Sure.
What's up?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is with respect to lot 10 at Maxwell Ave. The same plans were used, the original plan filed with the ZBA and the basis of the decision in April of 2015. And then Ramonda has put up on the screen, the planning board approved subdivision plan called the Phase 2 plan also. And there were slight changes in the area of the lots and the boundaries of the lots on the Maxwell Ave side and on the Route 1 side. I described for you that with respect to lot 9, it was a difference of a reduction of about 21 square feet. With respect to lot 10, it is a greater reduction, but again, it does not affect the width of the lot in the area where the house would be built. And the original ZBA plan shows the area where a house would be built, and shows the line where relief was granted with respect to lot width. I will point out for you that what is different in lot 10 compared with lot 9 that we were just discussing is that there is a parcel in the lower right-hand corner of the property marked as parcel E, and you should have that on your plans. And that was a conveyed out 994 plus or minus square feet to be joined to the 105 Boston Providence Highway. It had been an encroachment, in fact, it was a paved area, and that was taken away from lot 10. Lot 10, even as reduced, exceeds the area required in the general residence zone by better than 60%. Lot 9 is almost double the size required. But none of the changes that we're talking about affects the lot width or the available area of the, of lot 10, between the original plan that you approved in 2015 and the Phase 2 plan approved by the planning board later that year, which was the basis of the conveyances. Again, what I, by asking you to do this, what I'm trying to do is make sure that the record reflects that when this, when these lots are conveyed, they have been conveyed, and if they're conveyed again, they're conveyed based upon the plan, the planning board subdivision plan. And I want to be able to tie the variance relief granted to that, so that nobody down the road says, again, wait a minute, this was approved based upon a plan, and the lots changed subsequent to the zoning board granting the variance. The lots did change. Lot 9, very slightly, lot 10, a little more, but not by much. And again, where the area where building can be done, the area where the lot width relief was granted, all of that is intact. The changes are out by Maxwell Ave and on the Route 1 side of lot 10. So I ask you to approve this on the same basis as you just approved lot 9, so that the planning board plan I've labeled as Phase 2 plan can be part of the record and the basis of the decision granting variance relief. Again, to tie the lots, as they now exist, to the decision that you made in April of 15. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Dave, thank you. So with that much briefer explanation in regards to very similar, the last case we just had, I'll turn it over to some questions, if anybody has any. I think it's relatively the same, and relatively along the same avenue. So, Mr. Riley, do you have any questions you want to add in regards to this lot 10 case?
No, no questions.
Mr. Murphy, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Mulvahill?
You're muted, Packy.
All right, thank you, Scott, no, thank you, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Perry?
No, it's Mr. Redundant.
Thank you, yeah, I, I'm fine with it as well, no questions from the chairman. So I will entertain a motion to close?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Murphy, thank you both. Motion on the floor to close case number 15-07 regarding lot number 10 on Maxwell Avenue, the modification for it. Mr. Riley, how do you vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Mulvahill?
Yeah.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well, so five to nothing on that case as well, so both cases, no problem at all, David, good luck with it, and look...
Mr. Chairman, one thing, did you just vote on the motion to close?
We did.
Okay, did you vote on the motion to grant?
I don't, did we?
No. I'll make the motion to approve.
Sorry about that, Dave, thanks for pointing that out, losing my mind, too. All right, so a motion to approve by Mr. Murphy, is it seconded yet?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Mulvahill, thank you, I feel, sorry, one more time, and I apologize, I'm a little distracted, but my bad. Mr. Riley, how do you vote on the approval or disapproval?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Mulvahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well, thank you for pointing that out, David.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, five to nothing on that, thank you, and good evening.
Five to nothing on both, yes, sir.
All right, great, good night.
Good night, have a good night. All right. Next case up. Obviously, well into the time, so we're fine. So the next case up, case number 20-08, is a continu, is a, the hearing was closed on December 15th for this case. We, Mr. Perry requested a little bit more time so he could review the pictures that were provided by one of the neighbors of the applicant. And I will go to that in a minute. The cases, as I said, 20-08, 973 University Ave for a gravel operation and excavation. So Mr., and I, Mr. Perry, can I start with you? And can I ask if you did review the things that you were looking for, and if you were satisfied or dissatisfied with them, please, sir?
Yeah, I did review it, and I took it to the office and spent some time with it, and approved a lot of it.
Okay, so you're all set with the, with the pictures and stuff that you had a little bit of concern with last time?
Yes, I did, yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you. I'll move over to Mr. Riley. Mr. Riley, did you have anything, you voiced some concerns the last time, I just didn't know if you had anything this time you wanted to add, or anything you wanted to speak of in regards to?
I actually do have one thing that I wanted to add that I didn't mention before. Because I wouldn't want to just reiterate what I've already said. But I don't believe that I have made any reference to the consent decree in this case. The consent decree in this case indicates in page 6, among other things, that UAVE will not commence operations at the facility until all stormwater control measures detailed below have been implemented in their entirety. We found out at the meeting of November 17, when we went through the various control measures that were detailed, that while some were completed, there were others that were not, so it had not been completed in its entirety. Based on the evidence submitted by, by then, by council for the neighbor, it indicates that there was considerable work being done, even in September and in November. The photographs of September 9th, there are also photographs that took place in November, as well as testimony apparently from people from Walker that observed the ongoing work. As a result, it strikes me that there is work going on that was not supposed to be going on. The consent decree on page 3 indicates that upon its entry, it becomes a final judgment of the court. And it further indicates on page 5 that UAVE, I'm reading from the, from the document, that UAVE shall not violate this consent decree, and shall not allow its officers, directors, agents, servants, attorneys, in fact, employees, successors of signs, contractors to violate this consent decree. And the next paragraph 9, it indicates that in addition to any relief specifically provided in this consent decree, UAVE understands and agrees that violations of this consent decree may be punishable by, may be punishable by contempt pursuant to an appropriate civil contempt proceeding. Now, no such proceeding occurred, fortunately, but it appears to me, looking at the summary of the evidence before us, that in addition to the failure to comply with cease and desist order, it looks to me as if there may be a violation of the, of the orders that were set forth in the, in the consent decree, which by its own terms is a judgment of the court. And it strikes me that, however much it is certainly a bad thing to have a failure to comply with a cease and desist order, a violation of a federal court order is a, an even more serious matter, and appears to have occurred in this case, as I read it.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this? This is outside the public hearing scope of the public hearing, and I'd like, and public hearing is closed, but I'd like to be able to respond to this.
When he, when he's finished, I will.
I understand the hearing has been closed, I'm not introducing evidence that was not present. The consent decree was referenced during the hearing, and I'm simply commenting on matters that appear within the decree. The evidence of continuing work on site was also introduced during the hearing. The evidence of non-completion of the various items listed in the decree that had to be completed in their entirety was also discussed in the hearing. So I'm not commenting on something that was not in the hearing. And I can close simply by saying that it increases my lack of confidence that we can reasonably expect that the applicant will comply with whatever conditions might be imposed in the event of a grant of the application, thank you.
Mr. Bailey, I'll give you, I'll give you a little, little latitude to respond to that, if you really wish, out of courtesy.
Thank you. I know, no, I'm not gonna go there. What the consent decree says is that there will be no earth removal operations at the site until the stormwater improvements have been completed. There have been no earth removal operations at the site since last February or March, whenever, whenever the cease and desist order occurred. Yes, there was some material moved around, there was material moved off-site. At least some of that work was done with the consent of the building inspector. There is also work going on there right now, because it is installing the stormwater basins that are required by the consent decree, and then have been approved by the Conservation Commission. So, yeah, there's been work going on there, but it hasn't been earth removal work. It's been work to, much of it has been work to comply with the stormwater requirements, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, well, I think, I think, I'm not gonna get into who's right, who's wrong. I do think Mr. Riley had, clearly had some very valid points. You know, your interpretation of it is what it is, and whether there's earth removal or not, the, the actions of the, which we discussed, you know, at length last time, the actions of doing stuff with the cease and desist order, regardless of exactly what took place on that, I do think that was addressed the last time. Now, if nothing, if you guys, if you, if your client hasn't worked up there since February or March, so be it, you know, again, it's all left open to, to opinion, I do believe, that's my firm belief, but...
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm responding the way that I am, because Mr. Riley has gone and accused my client of violating federal consent decree, and that's a pretty serious accusation, and it's not true, so I can't let it stand.
I responded, I responded... May I respond to that, Mr. Chairman, because counsel has misrepresented what I said. I have not made an accusation. What I am saying is that on the basis of the evidence before us, it seems that it may very well be possible that there was a violation of a decree. I did comment before I said that, that there has been no adjudication, no hearing, so we cannot make a definitive comment that there has. Nor did I make such a comment, nor did I intend to. I'm simply suggesting that it appears possible to me on the evidence before it, that that may very well have occurred. The fact, of course, counsel says that nothing was done, but in the material that was submitted by the neighbor, they indicated that excavating, I'm quoting from their letter, that excavating materials in the middle of the U A V property, processing it, loading it into trucks and hauling it away for sale off-site has nothing to do with the work required to the dissension base. So there is evidence, whether it accepts it or not. I guess that's where we differ. That's all, thank you.
And that's where it stands. I appreciate both your opinions, of, of course. Phil, very valid, of course, as always. And Dan, Mr. Bailey, you know, your rebuttal with, with the evidence presented by you, again, that'll, that'll all be taken into consideration by the committee or the board, rather, well, you know, in, in the final decision, I'm sure. So thank you both for your input on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Phil, anything else?
No, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Okay, Mr. Mulverhill, can you add anything that you would like?
No, I, I'm curious to see what Murph has to say because I know at the last meeting, Scott was going to work on some verbiage and I agreed with a lot of what he said last meeting and how he verbed it. I'll hold, I'll hold my comments until I hear what Scott has to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, I'll move on to you. Sir?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I will say, I, I kind of agree with some of what Mr. Riley says, that I don't have a lot of confidence that the applicant is going to follow rules because he hasn't followed them so far, but I'm willing at this point to, to move to, except to grant the permit with certain conditions that Mr. Mulverhill indicated I outlined before. So if the chair is ready for that, I can, I can make the motion if the chair wants me to at this point, if you feel it's appropriate timing.
I, I will. I'm just, I'm going to add in something to myself, of my own, before you do that. I would appreciate the moment. I will speak direct. I don't know if your client is there with you, Mr. Bailey, or if he can hear us, if he's on the line.
He's on.
Okay, I think Mr. Riley had some, you know, as always has very valid points. I'm anxious to hear what Mr. Murphy has to say in regards to a hearing. I, I will go on record and, and say this. With absolute all due respect to your client, if a motion is made to approve this and the conditions are on it, I will say, again, with all due respect, I think your client would be an absolute fool not to adhere to it strictly by the letter of the law. And I don't know how better and stronger to put that. That is my personal opinion. I have my personal opinion on the fact that I do believe that the land does need to be developed, no question. But the rules, whatever they may be, if that's the case, certainly need to be followed in a very strict pattern, especially with the pattern that's already been displayed. So with that being said, I will move on to Mr. Murphy, and if you want to continue with what you had to say, Mr. Murphy, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I will, I will say that I would make a motion that the applicant, the application for the permit be approved. That the time limit, it'd be a two-year permit, similar to the two-year permit that we granted in two thousand thirteen that the applicant originally violated, but a two-year permit. After one year, we'd like a status review to the, to the board, which would include a closure plan as we discussed at the last meeting. So not, not a closure plan is what is going to be there at the end of the day, but what this facility, what this property will look like when they're done with their excavation. And so that would include, you know, when the excavation materials are complete, including erosion, what erosion control is going to be, what the slopes and grades would be.
Do me a favor, just, I'm writing this down as I'm quite certain Executive Assistant is taking care of as well. Can you just go a little slowly when you say each step?
Sure, sure. Sorry about that. Showing the slopes and the grades in, on the site.
Thank you.
The planting and screening plan for what the planting and screening of trees and shrubbery and brush will look like on the site before it's going to be developed further, just what it's going to look like when they're done excavating.
Okay.
The next condition I would ask that the board, we, we vote, and I would make a motion to add for Mr. Ryan's November seventeen, twenty twenty memorandum to us. And I'm going to list them off. I know Ms. Morgan has them, so I, I can go through them, but it's one, two, three, five, and seven from Mr. Ryan's memorandum, which according to Mr. Fabry's testimony, most of which he's completed, but I think it's, it's important that those plans are drawn correctly according to what Mr. Ryan requested. And that's the, number one is the permeability test results. Number two, the, on the cross-section didn't show the elevation on the vertical scale. Number three, there were no cross-sections in the plan view. And again, I think a lot of these have been dealt with already, but just, I think they should be conditions. Number five is fall protection at the top of the wall. And number seven is provide the plan and profile of the proposed basin and outlet pipe. Again, I think most of these have already been taken care of, but I think they should be listed as conditions. The next condition would be to return the abutters property to the condition it was in prior to the encroachment. And that should be, that should be completed within a hundred and eighty days based upon the fact that the, the trees will need to be planted so that, that'll be more seasonal. And I would also add to that condition that so long as they, the applicant is allowed on the abutters property to complete this work. Because if they're not allowed on the property to complete the work, then they can't, then I don't think we should, we should have to hold them to it. But if that's the case, that they're allowed on to complete the work, they have a hundred and eighty days to put the property of the abutter in the condition it was in, when this, before this all started, or before the encroachment. Another, the next condition would be a twenty-foot setback. We just discussed that a little bit.
About that, buddy. Hold on, just, I'm just finishing that up. Did you say you said a hundred and eighty days?
Hundred and eighty days. Because that gets us into planting season. I think that was, that was a fairer, a fairer solution at this point. Nothing much can be done in January and February, or March even. Okay, should I continue? One more.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
The last one is that the applicant has to obey the order of the, of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And to what Mr. Riley said, also has to obey the consent decree with the Attorney General. Those would, as Mr. Riley noted, both of those would have their own separate penalties. But I think if they violate and they're shown to have violated those order conditions or the consent decree, that that should impact on, on our permit as well. And we could, you know, take up further action as far as that's concerned. So those are my, as we talked about at the last meeting, those are the conditions that I would propose to approve this application at this point. But just based upon, I'm not going to reiterate everything I said the last time. I just don't think, I mean, I think the applicant has to go a long way to show that he can, he can comply with these conditions and, and do this project. And I agree with Mr., I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that, you know, the, the, it's a big hole in the ground right now. And it's not really what the town needs is to have, have this, this way. The project needs to be finished and the property needs to be developed. And that's, that's my opinion. So that's why I'm making this motion.
Okay, now, there's, there's one, if you don't mind, if I could add or suggest an adding that where he might, you said he must be able to access, the applicant must be able to access his property from the MS Walker property in order to restore the property condition to what it was.
No, the, 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 the damage was done, the encroachment was on MS Walker's property. So he's going to have to go back onto MS Walker's property to fix it. And if MS Walker doesn't let him on his, the property, then he can't fix it. So I don't think we can hold him to that. But so long as MS Walker gives him permission to go on his property and put the property in the condition it was before he encroached, that would be my condition.
All right, do we need to put an applicant, do we need to put a condition on this, in this motion that would require him to ask permission in writing? Or how, how would we go about that?
No, I mean, I, it's going to, listen, we're going to be back, he's going to be back before, if this motion is approved, he's going to be back before us in a year with the status, and we'll have the status, we'll know, we'll know what happened then, and we can decide, we can decide if, if it's been complied with or not.
All right.
I wouldn't put too many, I, I wouldn't put too much extra, a lot of details on it. I think as long as he gets permission and he go, he has to go on the property and fix it, fix what he just, what he damaged. I think that's only reasonable.
No, and, and I do as well. And I'll go back to my earlier statement. I think whatever, I'll go with what I said earlier. I agreed, and I think I would have to assume that all avenues will be covered. Mr. Mulverhill, if I can go back to you for a minute, you said you wanted to reserve comment. Is there anything you want to add to the conversation?
Well, yeah, so, I mean, again, we heard a lot of testimony from the powers-to-be at Town Hall that they were upset and this, that, and the other, and I'm paraphrasing that, you know, that they were going to reserve the right to review this application and the whole process, blah, 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 blah. You know, I said it at the outset, I'll say it again. You know, there's no excuse for what Mr. Federico did, and he's completely been forthright in saying that he has, and I've used my verbiage of stubbing his toe, or you can call it what you will, but he made a mistake and he's been held accountable to the two hundred fifty-some-odd thousand dollars by the state Attorney General's Office. And he had to enter into that decree. I don't know what we're looking for, for the end game here. Are we, do you want to hide and heal him to a barn door and tar and feather the guy? Or do you want to just stop him in his tracks and leave the pit there? Or, I, I don't know. But I mean, do we fine him another fifty thousand? Is that what the town's looking for? I don't know. My point is, and it was kind of aptly said in one of the newspapers, that half the town doesn't even know where this GD thing is. And as a sidebar, it was a perfect spot for an asphalt plant, in my humble opinion, but that failed. Now it's, he's got the right to harvest, which we gave him, the gravel and, and the stone and, and the earth within the parameters of his permit, which we, you know, issued, and he didn't renew. And he's at fault. So I'm trying to find a, a way that we can put this to bed, close it, as Murph said, have him come in, give a status report, have him cross his Ts, dot his Is, maybe have an independent, somebody independent to the, to the board, maybe somebody from the planning board, somebody outside of this whole domain to go down there and take a look, whether it's the Attorney General's Office, whoever, to go in there and make sure he's doing the work correctly, that he replenishes the MS Walker property, all, all six feet of it, and he plants those thirty trees, which again, for the record, you can't even see from the Walker property. I said it before, I walked it, I climbed under the fence. From the Walker front door, you cannot even see the, the land in question. I'm not minimizing the, 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 the impact that it's had on the Walker property. They feel slighted, they feel damaged, and they're rightfully, rightfully so to be upset. But again, I think we're some folks in Town Hall are trying to make this out to be the, 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 the Nuremberg trials, and I'm using that, you know, loosely. But I mean, God, let's put this to bed, move forward with something else.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if there's anything I want to add. I mean, I think I've said enough. I think, I will say that, I will reiterate, I believe, from something I did say from the, the December fifteenth meeting, we did meet, well, myself and Mr. Murphy did meet the applicant and Mr. Fabrizi, if I'm saying that correctly, I hope so, on the site and did get a tour of the property and an explanation. Mr. Walsh, the building inspector, was also there, who was also satisfied with the explanation. And I did get a, a mea culpa and a, you know, I screwed up, for lack of a better term, from Mr. Federico. I do think he certainly needs to do a better job at hearing, and we are going to move on this motion in a minute, but I, I do, again, want to reiterate that you do need to seriously give some strong consideration to, look, this is what needs to be done, because if not, then we're not going to be able to have the same result if that's the case in the, in the future. So with that, I'm just going to repeat Mr. Murphy's motion, if I could, Murph, I'll do it for you unless you want to do it yourself.
No, you can do it, either way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, please. It's a two-year permit. Is number, is the first, first section of it, that the, the second is after one year, we, the zoning board is looking for a status review, which will consist of a closure plan in regards to erosion control, showing slopes and grades, planting and screening of trees and bushes. Not when the final thing, plot is developed, but it, in the, once it's done being excavated, which I believe in, you know, might, it's probably going to take more than two years, which will, according to the last meeting and according to testimony in the last meeting. So obviously, there's no question you're going to have to come in in a year and explain what you're doing, and, and especially in two years, too, if you come in looking for an extension or whatever the case may be. But the third notification in the, in the plan is to adhere to Mark Ryan's memo, which Mr. Bailey, I assume you still have a copy of?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so Mr. Ryan's memo specifically numbers one, two, three, five, and seven. Mr. Murphy said what they were. I do not have that in front of me, but those specifically be adhered to, which I, as, as was pointed out, I think most of them already have been, but I don't think, the last two, I don't think you have any, you know, choice to do that with the consent decree itself. The next one, number four, return the property to the, to the condition as it was prior to.
The abutters, the abutters property.
The abutters property, I'm sorry, thank you. This must be done within a hundred and eighty days, if possible. And the applicant must be allowed by the neighbor, MS Walker, to access the property in order to get this done. So that I would, I would, I can't tell you what to do there, but I would strongly can suggest doing that with some type of proof or, you know, consent. Obviously, we're, we're looking for consent, but we want to, you know, prove that it was done, and that's, the hundred and eighty days is the key timeframe. Lastly, obey the order of the Conservation Commission and the consent decree from the Attorney General's Office, which was spelled out by Mr., Mr. Murphy.
Also, we, this has to be a twenty-foot setback around the property for, for the excavation. You missed that one.
Yes, I did. Thank you. So then the twenty-foot, I want to point out that the twenty-foot setback was a, it was actually suggested by the town planner, Paul Halkiotis, to have a fifteen-foot back. So I appreciate the fact that we're going to go a little further and make it a twenty-foot setback. So thank you for that. And, and I thank Mr. Halkiotis for the suggestion in, in his memo, which was very valid as well.
I will say, I will say, Mr. Chair, if I could, that we got, between Mr. Ryan and Mr. Halkiotis, a lot of the suggestions we got, the selectman's letter was a little redundant to some of the stuff they had already said. But the, Mr. Halkiotis and Mr. Ryan's memos were very helpful in kind of focusing some of these issues. And, you know, so that's the credit to them.
Thank you. So that is the official motion from Mr. Murphy to approve the applicant's request. So do I have a second?
Seconded.
So seconded by Mr. Mulverhill. Okay, so if we could, Jack, you still with us, buddy? I know he's still.
Yes, I am. Yeah.
Okay, so why don't, why don't I go with, with Jack first? Jack, how do you, how do you vote on Mr. Murphy's motion to approve?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, Mr. Riley? Oh, sorry, excuse me. Hold on, hold on. Jack, were you finishing, saying something?
No, I was just going to say, the project has to go on. I mean, you can't stop it and under some technicalities that can't be corrected. And like I said, it was far and poor. And I'd like to see it continue. And again, based on what Scott Murphy. it was far and poor, and I'd like to see it continue. And again, based on, uh, what Scott Murphy has said, I who uh, I agree with that. Definitely, I agree with him. Has to proceed.
Thank you. Gentlemen, with with all due respect, that we've already, we've already set our piece, um, in regards to it. So if we could just have a yes and no vote going forward, that would be great. Mister Perry is a yes, Mister Riley is a no. Mister Mulvihill, how do you vote on it, sir?
Yes.
Mister Murphy, how do you vote on it, sir?
Yes.
And the chairman is a yes as well. So the motion passes four to one. Okay, I'm just, uh, reading my messages to make sure I didn't, uh, do anything wrong from my administrative assistant, as who's also known as my boss. But, um, all right, so going, uh, going forward, I do have a question here. I gotta make sure I say this right. In filing the decision, and this this is directed towards Mister Bailey, in filing the decision, um, we normally have to get the decision to you in fourteen days. I am being asked by my administrative, uh, assistant if we could possibly extend that. Uh, and it's technically, it's officially coming from me. If we could extend that to double the time, if we could get twenty-eight days to file the decision to make sure it's worded perfectly, so we don't rush through anything and make sure everything's on the, on on the, uh, correct side of every, of of what it needs to be. If you would, you wouldn't have a problem with that. So you're all right with, uh, with, uh, filing the decision within twenty-eight days as opposed to the normal fourteen days?
Yes, I am. And if, um, if you want an email from me to that effect, um, you know.
If you could do that just for official purposes, uh, I mean, obviously, I have consent from you on on the record, but if you could, uh, if you could email my administrative assistant and just, uh, tell her that it's okay, uh, to to do the twenty-eight days, that would, that would be excellent, just for the file. And we, and we certainly.
It's on the way.
Okay, I appreciate it. You can wait till tomorrow morning, but we appreciate it.
I'll forget if I wait till tomorrow morning.
Uh, okay. All right, um. Gentlemen, I did say one thing before we accept the motion to close, if we could, you know, it's occasionally some things are easy, occasionally some things are difficult. You know, I know there's contention, I know there's dissension. Um, we're not always gonna agree on everything, but, uh, I will tell you this, it it's it's always a pleasure to work with you because regardless of the end result and regardless of whether we ever agree on it or disagree on it or agree to disagree on it, we all, we still go away as as a cohesive board and as a successful board, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you all very much for, uh, for doing that, uh, on a constant basis. So if I could entertain a motion to adjourn next, that would be fantastic.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mister Murphy. So there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Mister Riley?
Yes.
Mister Murphy?
Yes.
Mister Perry?
Yes.
Mister Mulvihill?
Yes.
And the chair is is a, uh, yes as well. So, uh, in closing, I just wanna say, everybody, like I said, you know, last year was tough for several reasons, personally and professionally. Um, you know, it hasn't been easy. I I I haven't seen you guys, uh, since March. You know what I mean? And it's, uh, it's tough. It's tough. I do appreciate getting together like this and, uh, I I I I not only consider you guys colleagues on the board, but I I consider you friends also, and it's not easy not being able to see my friends uh, for such a long time. So I just wanna let you know how it means to be. Let's, uh, let's move forward very positively in the next year. Hopefully, all this garbage calms down and, uh, and we're ever, we're able to move on as people and as a society. All right. So thanks again for everything and, uh, good night.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good night. Good night.